We call the order, call the order meeting of the mayor and council. We will act, first we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All present, mayor.
Okay, now, could we have a prayer from Mr. Johnson?
I'll start. Father, we come at this hour thanking you for the minute blessing you have bestowed on each and every one of us on the sound of my voice. You have blessed every household that's represented here tonight, and we thank you, Father. Father, as you just touched us, let us all be on one accord at this meeting tonight. Let us agree, and if we have to, be able to disagree. Thank you, Father, for this meeting, thanks for the one that's intended. These are our blessings, we thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge, Mr. Moore?
Salute, pledge. All present in attendance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on a rock, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and love.
And before we sit, could we have a moment of silent prayer for Mr. Doyle Henderson? He used to be a policeman, he's retired, he passed recently. And we do have, I guess, congressional district election for district representative of fifth districts, and also on that ballot you will see a renewal of the street tax. And we have to have it. That's the way we buy any equipment for the street department or patch or overlay in the streets, and we still have a lot we have to do. So, remember when you go to vote, please vote for the tax. Do we have any other announcements? Any public comment as to the agenda? Approval of previous minutes, regular meeting October 10th, 2013.
A motion, we accept a minute?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Financial committee report, resolution 131539, bills and claims for October 2013.
I make the motion, mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any objections? Motion passes.
Did we vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, Mr. Randy Beavers, Peoples Water Company.
Good evening. Excuse me. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. My request is for Peoples Water Service to be granted a new franchise agreement by the city. The immediate need for this request stems from a large capital investment to install a 1,000 gallon per minute water filter treatment facility at our Ogden Street production facility. Project would benefit our city by reducing aesthetic issues, this cold water that will be on the west side of Bastard from our Ogden and our Robert Street wells. In addition to clearer water, personal property taxes paid by Peoples Water to the city will increase. The filtration process we've designed has proven to be effective through pilot filter testing that we've conducted for nearly a year at our site, and I'm very excited about those results. Peoples has received approval by the Office of Public Health for the filter system and is ready to award the project to the lowest bidder. The cost of this project is approximately $600,000. This is a tremendous investment, but it's an investment that will ensure quality water to our customers, and we'll do it for decades to come, and I feel like it would help attract more businesses, more jobs. As the existing franchise that we have with the city expires in a relatively short time, and the useful life of this investment is multiple decades, that's why Peoples is requesting now a new franchise. There's a similar franchise that exists that is for 50-year, but I was hoping that with this, we could be granted a 25-year franchise again that would parallel the useful life of the equipment that we're hoping to install. And we do have a low bidder with this project that has extended his bid through November 15th, which is tomorrow. From Peoples' perspective, time is of our essence of this, but what I'd like to do is talk with their bidder and extend the contract, and I feel like he will, certainly upon favorable request, this request is being received favorable by the council. But this filter and this system wants its off, it is in operation. It will be an improvement for our city, for fellow citizens, for our businesses, and for our future economic development and residential development. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Is this a 50-year agreement or 25-year agreement you're talking about?
Our request would be a 25-year agreement, and that would parallel the useful life of the equipment that we're hoping to install.
And I know our, the one we have now, what, run out in about five years?
Yes, sir. It is, 20, yes, there is, 2003, it was running 15-year, yes, sir, 2018.
I have a question, just a hypothetical question. Supposing the city want to purchase a water company, are, will the water company still going to invest in this filtration system between here and five years?
With the existing franchise agreement that we have, there is a clause there for expropriation that does cover that guideline, so that's already existing, that hypothetical situation is already answered or agreed upon with the existing franchise that's in place.
Now, was you all still going to put the filtration system in place anyway?
We're going to progress, yes, sir.
Are y'all required by law to go ahead and put the system in place?
No, sir, we're not required by law. This is an aesthetic issue, it's not related to water potability, and we're not required by the Office of Public Health, or DHH, or anyone to perform this measure. This is something that we want to do, that we know will improve quality of water in our system, and it has, it also has a dual effect by installing this, that we'll have two wells in operation, one that we're not currently using at our Ogden Street site, as well as our Robert Street well, and some other upgrades that would be a synergy with this project also.
One more question. Are you all planning on raising the rate?
No, sir. With the franchise is exclusive of rates, and that's part of the Public Service Commission general order, is that the rates are separate in the franchise agreement.
You can't do without Public Service Commission.
You have to have Public Service's approval for any rate increase, right?
Yes, sir.
And also you would have to bring it before the board, the council also, right?
Yes, sir. Everybody would be involved in a measure like that, yes.
Another question, what is the timing on this equipment? How long does it take to get it, and how long does it take to install it?
Yes, sir. Will we be able to begin construction immediately? Our contractors can have it installed by spring of 2014. And I say that because we have clearance with Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality and besides DHH, OPH, there will be an effluent from the system, a discharge from a backwash, and we've got clearance for a discharge permit from LDEQ. That would all set to begin in March of 2014, and we're prepared for that. Construction-wise, it's, it will happen by the spring of 2014, where we, to begin immediately.
Another question, would it be in the disruption of water service to install this equipment?
No, sir, not at all. The units run are rated for 1,000 gallons per minute, which is normal flow that goes through the Ogden well site. And the day that the filters would come online would just be a matter of opening one valve that's going through the flow is current and going through the filter system. And there's contingencies, there's other areas there when we backwash, and other matters that are addressed that, as things are performed with the unit, there will be no interruption, as well as we have two well sites out on Windhaven that are capable of duly can produce little 2.5 million gallons of water a day, which is well and above what the city's consumption is at this time.
One more question, is that coal filter system or sand?
It's, I appreciate that. It's, it is more of an activated carbon type media, that we do have an oxidizer, a chlorine oxidizer, that is fed before the system, and then we do have an activated system that acts as an absorption process. Yes, sir. And all of this has been approved through the Office of Public Health. In fact, this type of treatment, they're very impressed with, they, for the state of Louisiana, they wrote their own standard operating procedure for this procedure. This would be, first, this been, this type of chemical absorption be the first in Louisiana, and we're very excited about the opportunity to bring that to pasture.
I have a question, Mr. Beavers. We have five more years, or three, on our agreement.
The existing agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. Why, what's the urgency of renewing it tonight?
We, to renew, to finance this type of construction, this type of operation, it is crucial that all people involved with this project are assured that we have an agreement with the city for operation during what is the useful life of this equipment. And that's 25 years, this is a very quality-made and designed system, and that's 25 years is the useful life of the equipment, and that's the timeframe that we're needing to secure the involved parties with this, with the financing, with engineering, that this project is secured. We do have a binding covenant or a franchise agreement with the city through this normal lifespan of the equipment.
My assumption that in the beginning it was labeled at 50 years, and now it's 25?
There, we have a, we have a franchise agreement with the parish, and that is for 50 years. And that's with us, with the parish, and we're not asking for anything more than of a franchise agreement than what would be secured for this matter we have with this equipment, and certainly one that would reach the boundaries of the useful life of the
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Why 50 years with the parish? Why is, how 50, you know, how y'all reached 50 years? Or why 50?
Yes, sir. Armstrong, I wasn't involved with the agreement of that, but I can tell you that we're going in our fourth year of that agreement with the parish, and we work very well with them. And as I recall from understanding, there, I don't know, I don't recall the timeframe, but it was another longer-term franchise that was previous from when this was approved back in 2010, is my recollection, but I do know that with that agreement, that was in late 2010, we worked very well with the parish.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we will thank you, Mr. Beavers, for coming, and we'll take it undivided.
Thank you.
Discussing with our turn and everything, and we'll be getting back with you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Resolution 131536, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a contract with Denman Engineering to provide professional engineering services for the relocation of the existing windsock. It's a state project. Project number 13101, relocation at the Moles Memorial Airport. Mr. Brent, our airport manager.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
This is basically just an agreement with Denman Engineering to provide the engineering services, just well as it says on the agenda, for the relocation of the wind cone. And that's actually part of a grant that the state is going to provide to us to pay for that project, and engineering fees are included in the grant as well.
Now, would you like to tell what the wind cone is?
The wind cone is a device that pilots use, they can overfly the airport and tell what direction the wind is blowing, so they'll know which end of the runway to approach, or what winds they'll encounter as they come into land, so they can compensate for it.
You just said it was a grant, right? A grant?
Yes, sir. It's a grant from Louisiana Department of Transportation. This was actually the grant that we voted to accept, I believe, last month.
Right.
Is the location of the existing one just not in the right place, or is, what, has it been because of improvements to the airport, or?
Well, actually, what the issue was is that the state wanted us to upgrade the existing wind cone. And in the process of upgrading it, they said, what we need to do is go ahead and move it to another location.
Okay.
Because we do show future development in the area where the wind cone currently is located, and that development would interfere with the wind cone operation. So just in, to get ahead of that, they said, well, let's go ahead and move it to where we plan to in the future. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
May I move for adoption of resolution 131536?
I second the motion.
We have a motion, and just add a couple of seconds. Any other discussion? All for? Against? Motion passes.
Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 131537, a resolution authorizes the city of Bastrop through its mayor to make application to the fiscal year 2014-2015, Louisiana Community Development Program for a grant in order to make improvements to the city sewer system.
Mayor, we're getting in line for another round of grants through the community block grant. The money that we're going to use is to try to upgrade the next system sewer project that we have. This is a very lengthy process, we're not even through with the other one, but we've got to start on this to be able to get in on time. So we're just asking you to grant the mayor permission to make an application, so we can begin asking for the money.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any other discussion? All for? Against? As have it. Resolution 131538, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, rejecting acceptance, maintenance, and legal responsibility for Leanne Loop, Mary the Street, and other roadways established in the Hillview Home Housing Development, and providing for other matters in connection thereof. And what this is, the new subdivision, the streets weren't built to the city's specifications, and what we are doing, we're just putting it in writing that we are not accepting them, and for future council, that if anything happened to it, the city is not responsible. That's what this motion is. We got a motion?
A second.
And a second, that we accept this resolution. Again, it's only saying that we, these streets weren't built to our specification, and the city is not responsible. And this is only for future mayor and councils. We already know it. Okay. Any other discussion? All for? Against? Resolution 131540, a resolution of support for a grant through the Local Governmental Assistance Program, this LGAAP, to make applications, execute, and enter into a corporate endowment agreement with the state of Louisiana for funds to purchase patrol cars and equipment. And this is how we got our last calls, and we are applying for a grant to buy some of our police fleet.
I make the motion, mayor.
Second.
Mr. Moore made the motion, Mr. Shaw seconded. Any discussion? All for? Against? Motion pass. And I believe, chief, you said we'll start seeing our new cars next week? Okay. They are getting equipment, put in them now.
I got a question for the chief. Chief Black, you said want to be on the streets next week?
Yes, sir.
How long will it be before we get an additional?
Well, we'll take, we'll go three for, pick up the one that's ready. It's only money. We'll bring an old one and a new one, in effect, you're putting off the old car, you put it on the new car. When I get through that, well, then we'll bring the other, the last one. Soon as they come back, it'll be ready to go.
Thank you, sir.
And the part that's taking so long is, these are, when you say old equipment, some of the equipment, we can't make it fit in the new cars, so this new, had to have some equipment ordered for the new cars. And that's what took so long. Resolution 131541, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, rejecting acceptance, maintenance, and legal responsibility for South Point Loop and such other roadways established in the South Point Housing Development, and providing for other matters in connection thereof. This is the second subdivision they are building, and as of right now, their plans do not meet our specifications, and this is rejecting these streets too. Now, the good, they still have time to change them, and if they do, we will change our motion, but right now, we're, according to their plans, we're rejecting them.
May I make the motion?
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All for? Against? Ordinance number 134221, an ordinance of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop to amend and restate section 416, 417, 419, and 423.1 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, related to the hours that establishments may remain open to permit the consumption of alcohol beverages on the premises, the use of post-certified security on the premises of such establishments, and addressing other related matters that respect thereof. Mr. Lawrence?
Mayor, this is an ordinance that was introduced, or, I'm sorry, it is to be introduced on tonight for final action at your December meeting to adjust the opening hours within the city of Bastrop for establishments where alcohol is consumed on the premises. The specific request that this ordinance is designed to accommodate is to permit establishments to remain open between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 2:00 a.m. on what we're going to refer to as Friday night, which is really Saturday morning, and on Saturday night, which is really Sunday morning. And so it makes that adjustment, and it was necessary to amend each one of these sections of the Code of Ordinances that are referenced to accommodate this type of a change in the law that would prevent these establishments to remain open for this two-hour period for these two days of the week. That, along with the requirement that post-certified security must be stationed at these establishments when these extended hours are, are actually, well, I said that wrong, when these establishments are open for these extended hours, is also provided in this ordinance change. And when we say post-certified, we mean peace officer standards and training. There's a council known as the Council on Peace Officer Standard and Training, and that council gives a certification which deals primarily with the carrying of firearms by commissioned law enforcement officers. So the net impact of this will be that the folks who are required to provide security at these establishments must be people who are commissioned law enforcement officers here in Bastrop who have this post-certification. And of course, the last part of the, one of the ordinance drafts talks about there being not less than two post-certified security personnel at these establishments during this time. So tonight, this is for introduction, and it will come up again for consideration in
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
It's for Saturday, for Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
Only two days? What about Monday through Thursday?
What's in effect now is going to remain in effect, and that is the, forgive me, whenever I look at this, we have so many different individual ordinances until I have to look at all of them to make sure that I'm accurate. But if we have a 12:00 midnight closing period, for example, on those other days, that's going to remain in effect. There is not going to be an extension of the closing hours on any other day, and under the ordinances, the only other time periods when you have an extension, is a built-in change that we did a few years ago to allow establishments to remain open until 2:00 on New Year's, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. So that's, so those Monday through Thursday, Sunday through, however you want.
I guess Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, the other five days are not going to change.
Not going to change.
Yes, sir.
It's in common sense.
Kind of inconsistent with the law, isn't it, you know?
Well, it's inconsistent if what you mean is, you're only picking out two days of the week to stay open until 2:00. But I will say this, the right to sell alcohol is a right and not a privilege, is a privilege and not a right, I'm sorry. And so to that end, the city can regulate this privilege in such a way to where, you know, you can be more restrictive on the other five days and less restrictive on these two days.
Two days.
So.
And tonight, it's only introduction tonight, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're going to introduce the ordinance as is, is that correct?
Unless y'all say otherwise, and under the city charter, it has to lay over until the next regular meeting, come next month.
Question, Doug. Well, this will be for public notice for the next 30 days, right?
Yes, sir.
Or to our next meeting?
As a matter of fact, I was trying to remember, I think we, that's exactly why there's a layover period. We have to notify the public and give them opportunity to comment, and to let them know it's coming up on the next meeting agenda.
Right.
So that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay. Authority to authorize the filing of a civil suit for the collection of sewer fees, sewer use fees and assessments, and for the costs associated with these expenses of court personnel owed by the Mois Parish Police Jury. Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at an accounting that shows that dating back to the year, fiscal year 2004, 2005, there have been outstanding sums that are owed to augment court personnel salaries that have not been paid by the police jury that amount right now to $117,162.95. And in connection with sewer use fees, that is fees that are owed to the city of Bastrop by the police jury for providing sewer service, dating back to the year 2000, we showed that fees have accumulated to the amount of $33,530.50. And that fee is actually going to be a little bit higher because you haven't billed for 2013 yet. So it's probably going to end up being around $35,000 or $36,000 for those sums. When you add those two amounts up, right now, you're at $150,000 plus. So the question becomes, what does this council desire to do at this point in light of the fact that these fees have continued to accrue, have not been paid? I can tell you that there have been past efforts, I know, to discuss this with the police jury. And nevertheless, I think with the exception of one year in fiscal year 2005, 2006, there was an actual payment in full of the court salary fees. The augmentation of the funds that are used to pay the fees for court personnel, that was paid. But for the remaining years, coming forward to the current fiscal year that we're in now, there have been no fees paid at all. So it's a matter of what do you wish to do? I don't know that you have any alternative. I think you're at a fork in the road, and that is keep doing what you're doing and provide it gratuitously, or authorize the filing of a lawsuit to seek to collect these sums. And that's essentially where we are. I will say too, that in the matter of the court salaries, just for the benefit of the public, the city court of Bastrop is a ward court, actually, which means jurisdiction of the court extends outside of the city of Bastrop into parts of the parish. And that's one of the reasons why payment is being requested from the police jury toward the support of the salaries of court personnel. And so tonight, this request is to have an official vote, if it is so, if it is the desire of the mayor and board of aldermen to authorize a suit to be initiated.
Would I like to make the motion that we authorize to file a civil suit?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All for? Against? Motion passes. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
Start the necessary work.
I will. Yes, sir.
Appoint two members of the city of Bastrop Fire and Police Civil Service Board. Ms. Goldman, this is done.
They have staggered, we have five. They have staggered terms, so that way you won't have a brand-new board. And the procedure would be, we have two terms that expire at the same time. Once they, before they expire, the process would be that people that was willing to serve would submit a letter to the president of ULM. He submits four names to the mayor, and the mayor can choose two of the four names to bring for you to appoint, or vote on to appoint. And so the mayor has those, and I think he has two names. Mr. Boyd.
Benoit Canaud, he's already on the board, his name was resubmitted. And Mr. Ralph Coleman. And those are the two names. Mr. Coleman would be the new one.
So we would entertain y'all's vote on that.
I'd like to make that motion that we appoint Mr. Ralph Coleman and?
Benoit Canaud.
Benoit Key?
Canaud.
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 Yeah. Mr. Canaud is already on the board, and I guess the other one wasn't resubmitted.
I second that, Mayor.
We got a motion and a second. All for?
Aha.
Against? Motion passes. Discussion, action, bid on central fire station. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
It's a good day. It's something we've been working on for some years. On a personal note, on behalf of the men and women from the Bastrop Fire Department, we want to thank our city clerk who's worked hard at pushing this grant through. We want to thank you, Mayor, and the Public Works Department for coming down, for allowing the Public Works Department to come down and help us out and do a little passwork on it. But now, it appears that we don't have to put a Band-Aid on a broke leg anymore. So now we're going to just, I guess, rip it all out and get a brand-new one in. And so we're glad that we've reached this process, and we're ready to go forward.
Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, we got, we had three companies that was interested in bidding. Two companies actually put in a bid, and I'll read those off. Eminence Construction, Inc. of West Monroe, their bid was $53,900. And then we had a Chad Potty Construction Company, LLC out of Ruston, Louisiana. Their bid was $39,714, and our recommendation would be to accept the low bid of $39,714.
Ms. Goldman, I believe part of this is a grant.
Yes, sir. I can't remember the exact figure. I want to say it's around $25,000, maybe. We're going to have to add some money to it, but at least that'll help.
We have a motion, or we have a recommendation.
I make that recommendation, Mayor.
Second.
We got, actually, we have a motion and a second, but that was a recommendation. Ms. Goldman. All for? Against? Motion passes. Chad Potty of Ruston has the bid. Liquor license, chief?
Mayor and alderman, I'd like to recommend the following establishments for renewal of their liquor license for the year 2014. Fiesta Linda, 1065 East Madison Avenue, Class R Restaurant License. Veterans Private Club, and if you look on there, the address that you have is wrong. It should be 2324 and a half East Madison Avenue. Class B Private Club. Happy Stop, 1233 North Washington, Class A Dealer Off Premises Only. Stop and Shop, 1001 East Madison Avenue, Class B Retail Dealer On Premises. I think that should be off as well. I don't think they should be on premises. I'd have to tell Jackie that, I think that's the old shortstop?
It's off premises.
So it would be off premises. Discount Tobacco Outlet, 1416 East Madison, Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Whorehouse Liquor, 1851 North Washington, Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Supermart Number Two, 1920 North Washington, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Johnny's Pizza, 1601 Park Loop, Class B Retail Dealer On Premises. Zeke's Place, 432 West Madison Avenue, Class B Retail Dealer On Premises. Hester's Jiffy Pack, 741 Collingston Road, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Pantry or the Kangaroo Station, 1514 East Madison Avenue, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Porter Speed Mart, 1301 North Washington, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises Only. Those were for 2014. I recommend the following establishments for their 2013 liquor license for this year, from now to the end of the year. Club City Lights, 1779 West Madison Avenue, Class B Retail Dealer On Premises, that would be beer only. Sissy's U-Packet, which is the old Phyllis's U-Packet on East Madison, the Chevron Station. They're about to reopen, 1630 East Madison Avenue, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises Only.
And the one on West Madison was what?
Club City Lights. They have a?
No, I was trying to find out where it is.
The old Wong Shuang's Barbecue, Afro Liquor Building.
Okay.
Chief, I have one question. Does all of these meet the clearance requirements for the city?
They have to, we don't recommend their license until they get approval from the state. They have to actually get their state license before we approve their license. And the state goes in and makes the measurements, takes the measurements, and makes sure that they, you know, they meet all the requirements.
Mayor, I make that motion.
We have a motion to grant these license?
I second.
And a second. Any discussion? All for?
Aha.
Against? Motion passes.
Mayor, if you want to expand the agenda, you can ask him.
This is about agreement with MedLife, about their franchise, and we need to expand the agenda to bring it up. That's our ambulance service.
May I make that motion that we expand the agenda tonight?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All for?
Aha.
Against? As have it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Every five years, we renew our agreement with the city of Bastrop, and we've, I think we've had it for about 15 years now. But it comes up in June, and what I'd like to do is go ahead and be able to renew it effective June, but renew it tonight. But I've got to make a lot of investments. Our equipment usually lasts about five years, and this year it hasn't lasted, and I need to go ahead and spend the money now. But I'd feel a lot better having an agreement in place before I have to make that big of an investment.
I make that motion, Mayor.
And I second.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Aha.
Against? Motion passes. Other than that, could we get a motion for adjournment?
So move. You talking about the mayor, huh?
He don't want change, is he?